We can fill out on each person and then.
He's trying to tell me that you liked him better. I didn't believe, I didn't believe it.
He was here first, yeah.
Whatever. I don't. Uh, this is part of our meeting today. Okay. Very good.
Yeah, that's good, but he's gonna interrupt.
Yeah, it's funny. Holiday's in protest, it is appropriate. I showed it this morning.
Did you? Yeah.
He's got it up where the other one was. That's what he'd like to have for now.
Was it one point six or something?
Something like that, yeah.
Yeah, I know.
They've got him kinda, kinda all hooked up in there. Reed's got a bunch on one side and, and uh, Nelson's got all the rest of it, nice big pond, everything. None of it goes with this property.
Oh, really?
It's kinda, kinda cut up and small. Those other ones might be worth that, but it's just gonna quite cut it.
Yeah.
We'll have to see. It's got a little bit of crick run through, but it's runoff water. It runs too fast to stock. You can't stock anything at it.
Oh, is she, are, I mean, like, how's it?
He wants to build a pond. Oh, are we ready?
Oh, yeah. Oop.
Okay, I thought it was done a week ago.
Well, we can sweep it. Okay, folks, it uh, we're just a little past twelve. A minute passed. We'll call the meeting into order. For public information, we do have a copy of the Open Meetings Act back on these to all the commissioners' room. Roll call, please.
Meyer.
Here.
Harris.
Here.
Reizig.
Here.
Blue.
Here.
All rise to, sorry, all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Anybody have any changes to the agenda?
I do not.
Board?
So I move approval of the agenda as presented.
Any discussion? Call the roll.
Harris.
Yes.
Reizig.
Yes.
Blue.
Yes.
Meyer.
Yes. Okay, I want to remind everybody that the board does reserve the right to enter to a closed session anytime that we feel it's necessary. At this time, we don't have anything. Uh, first item is discuss. Uh, consider resolution for a fair, free week on Tri-City Roadrunners fixed routes during National Day Without Driving Challenge, October second, twenty twenty-three through October eighth, twenty twenty-three. And that's Kurt, so I don't see him.
Same here.
What's that? Oh.
I don't see him either.
How, uh.
It was part of discussion on the eighteenth is the only thing, and maybe we could skip it and.
Well, if he comes in, we'll go back to it. That's not a problem. Okay. With that, we do have a public hearing scheduled at twelve o'clock on the county budget, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four county budget. Yeah, so I'll open the public hearing and start with Lisa Ryan, the account man, management accountant.
Okay, I put my budget documents in each of your books that we've been using for the budget, and I just stacked it in front. So you've got all of it there. If you want the material we went through, through the budget meetings before, that's great. If you wanted me to take it out, I can and shred it, but anyway, I, I guess we'll just go through some of the forms that have to be, that I'm required to file. Starting off with a budget message that is, I write it. It is technically signed by the commissioner, so we'll go through it. And if you have any adjustments you'd like to me to make, please let me know. So, starting off, but I'm gonna pull up a different file so I can add in if we need. And I do have to have the budget filed by September thirtieth, which is not a problem. I'm like ninety-nine percent there. So, okay, budget message. Excuse me. Scotts Wolf County Board of Commissioners remains committed to providing the best possible services in a fiscally conservative manner. Valuations for Scotts Wolf County increased to three billion, six hundred and twelve million, one hundred and eighty-four thousand, three hundred and fifty-nine this year. This is an increase of three hundred and fifty-three million, five hundred and thirty-six thousand, four hundred and forty-two, or ten per, ten point eight four nine, eight four nine percent compared to last year's increase of a hundred and thirteen million, six hundred and thirty-four thousand, six hundred and sixty, or we had a three point six percent increase in our valuations last year. This year, we had a ten point eight. Total property ask, tax asking for the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four is thirteen million, five hundred and twenty-four dollars and, thirteen million, five hundred and twenty-four thousand, three hundred and nineteen, which is a three hundred and thirty-six thousand, two hundred and ninety-five dollar increase from last year. With the valuation increase, if we would have spent to the twenty twenty-three levy of point four oh four seven one zero, our tax ask would have been fourteen million, six hundred and eighteen thousand. Additionally, compared to the twenty, excuse me, got a message of twenty twenty-two levy of point four one two nine one four, the tax ask would have been fourteen million, nine hundred and fifteen thousand. Scotts Wolf County intends to reduce our portion of tax levy to point three seven four four one zero. Personnel costs are the county's biggest expense. Some county departments have decreased personnel expenses by streamlining processes and job absorption. Consequently, jail standards require a certain staff to inmate ratio. The roads department requires manpower to service the nine hundred and seventy-two miles of asphalt and gravel roads maintained in Scotts Wolf County. The sheriff's department is actively operating twenty hours a day, and the communications department requires twenty-seven, twenty-four seven coverage. So we will always require a significant workforce. Scotts Wolf initiated a wage survey in twenty twenty-two to evaluate and compare our non-union salaries to counties across the state similar in services. As expected, the results showed Scotts Wolf County salaries were outdated, requiring wage updates and salary scale repositioning. Conversely, our benefits were found to be comparable. Sheriff's Union completed union negotiations in July twenty twenty-three to be considered to other law enforcement agencies in our county and across the state. Significant wage increases were necessary. Retention in law enforcement is problematic. Scotts Wolf Ca, County is fortunate to be fully staffed in the sheriff's department. Communications, union discussions are centering on comparability wage studies. With the economic tensions and competition for job applicants, our county needs to retain the current staff. The high deductible health insurance plan with the health savings account option is working well for Scotts Wolf County as our health claim expenditures are at a manageable level, allowing us the opportunity to build a decent claim reserve. We intend to present a second insurance option for those employees who struggle to meet the high deductible. Levy. The levy request for Scotts Wolf County is point three seven four four compared to point four two nine three one four in twenty twenty-one, four one two nine one four in twenty twenty-two, and four oh four seven one oh last year. Levis continue to be allocated to the fire districts, the rural fire districts, cemetery districts, drainage districts, agriculture society, and the airport authority as presented in similar amounts to last year. Scotts Wolf Ca, County will carry forward a one million, two hundred and fifty-seven thousand, seven hundred and eighty-four dollar reserve compared to, huh, that's one change I can make. Oh, that's it. Compared to one million, four hundred and nineteen thousand, one hundred and eighty-three dollars last year, and unused restricted funds authority to next year. That was that big discussion we had last time when we had Naco join our conversation. This could be useful to us if special needs present in future years. We also have in excess of two million dollars in interlocal agreements that provide the opportunity to increase our levy by the five cents allowed. Page two. In the inheritance fund for fiscal years twenty-two, twenty-three, Scotts Wolf County, actually, that should be twenty-three, twenty-four. So, just a second. Scotts Wolf County has budgeted to use seven hundred and thirty-three thousand, two hundred and forty-three dollars of inheritance tax revenue to lower tax asking in the general fund and two hundred thousand to the communities, communications fund. Barring any additional legislative changes, Scotts Wolf County hopes this revenue stream continues. Income tax received in twenty-two, twenty-three was eight hundred and fifty-six thousand, four hundred and seventy-nine compared to eight hundred and twenty-seven thousand, four hundred and forty in the prior year, the year prior to that. Keno, proceeds of seven hundred and fifty thousand from the Keno lottery fund have been designated for community betterment purposes this year. Commu, Keno funds support the county share of the nine-one-one advisory committee, the county health department, roads department, and public assistance fund. Additional funds can be used to support community projects along with offsetting contributions to local nonprofit agencies. Building. Work is progressing to place an emergency generator on the Tenth Street campus necessary to maintain emergency power for the courthouse and administration buildings in the event of a short or long-term power outage. HVAC upgrades are also in process to improve air quality in the courthouse and administration buildings. ARPA funds are supporting these projects. The county receives realm ren, revenue from the Keno operator for the use of the frontside grill and bar housing the county's main Keno live ball operation. The D, DHHS building, sixteen hundred and tenth street gearing was sold in twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. Bond. The outstanding bond amount is eleven million, two hundred and thirty thousand. Of this amount, nine million, nine hundred and thirty-five thousand pertains to the detention center and one million, two hundred and ninety-five thousand for the sugar factory road project from twenty fifteen. All bonds have been refinanced in the last three years. We continue to use highway buyback monies to make highway allocation bond payment. Bond payments due in twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four total one million, two hundred and twenty thousand, two hundred and twenty-three. Road and bridge. The roads department one and six-year plans were presented to the county board September eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. Upcoming projects include repair or replacement of six bridges, including the Broadway Tenth Street Bridge over the North Flat River. ARPA funds will be used for this project. Six highway road projects are planned, including significant work on Highland Road and Chipso projects on Stiegel, Cook Oil, Sunflower, and Swedell Roads. Scotts Wolf County will be participating in the statewide stop sign upgrade program through a grant from the Nebraska Department of Transportation. Page three, detention center. Scotts Wolf County Detention Center is the largest non-metropolitan county operation in the state with a maximum capacity of two hundred and eighty-six detainees. Two hundred and twenty are men and sixty-six are women. Low occupancy was once again not an issue this past year. And employee turnover has reduced significantly as well. ARPA funds were utilized to install an updated security system with all new cameras and control system this year. This necessary upgrade replaced analog technology with wiring concerns that could have prompted a threat to the safety and security of staff and detainees. Contracts for federal, state, and local detainees were updated during the twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year. Communications. Integration to statewide radio was completed in the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three fiscal year. This is a monumental upgrade to our communication system and affor, affects every emergency agency in the county and beyond. Locksbury County has contracted communication services with our Scotts Wolf County Communication Services, and we anticipate requests to serve other agencies in the panhandle of Western Nebraska. Fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four will be an interesting year. Scotts Wolf County is formulating, formulating the best uses of the American Rescue Plan Fund granted by the federal government. This is a special opportunity to support projects that would have been challenging and possibly undoable without access to these funds. And I wrote the mission statement that we had attributed to our ARPA quest. It is the goal of Scotts Wolf County to use the American Relief Plan Act funding to serve the taxpayers of Scotts Wolf County. By completing large product, projects with the use of these funds, the county will fiscally save future taxpayer dollars. Community betterment is our goal. Thank you a, again to all the fiscally responsible and hardworking employees of Scotts Wolf County for your work preparing this budget. Signed, the Scotts Wolf Board of Commissioners. And it's part of my requirements to list the petty cash funds allocated to different, um, different departments throughout the county. And Commissioner approved balance like in the county clerk. She, she can have up to two thousand in her petty cash bag, and as of six-three, Kelly reported six twenty seventy, and you can see everybody else's. If you have any question, we can, we can address that with the department head. So. Anything you would like updated? This was, this is basically obvi, a carryover. I, I carry forward the same message and just add to it every year.
Just forward new numbers in and proceed. Look at.
Yeah.
Yeah, looks like you covered it well, Lisa.
All right. If that's okay. You're here today to complete a couple of resolutions. Yes, ma'am?
Are you done, are we done with the hearing? No, or?
No, we're not done with the hearing. I just was talking about the.
Okay.
Either that, I, the resolutions basically are, whereas a county budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, prepared by Budget Making Authority was transmitted to the county board on the twenty-fifth, fifth day of September. And I did not give you a copy of this, so. Now therefore be it resolved by the ca, Board of Commissioners of Scotts Wolf County, Nebraska as follows. Section one of the budget of fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four as categorically evidenced by the budget document B and the same hereby is adopted by the budget, as the budget for Scotts Wolf County for said fiscal year, that the office's department activities and institution herein named are hereby authorized to expend the amounts herein appropriated to them during the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, and that the income necessary to finance the appropriations made and expenditures authorized shall be provided out of the unencumbered cash balance in, in each fund. Revenues other than taxation to be collected during the fiscal year in each fund and tax levy requirements for each fund. That'll be the first one you'll sign. And then we are, basically, I can read this through more thoroughly when we get through all the papers. This just addresses how much is going to be allocated to the general fund and how much to the bond funds. So, that being said, questions? Do you want me to read through that now? I think it'd be best to read it later. Does that come straight from?
Okay, this uh, this is a public hearing. If there's anybody in the, in the audience that wishes to speak or have questions concerning the county budget, now would be the time.
We'll just go through the pages in the first section, pretty much, and then I'll tell you more of what's on the other sections if you are curious. This is forms from the auditor of a public, a public accounts. Again, that we will be, as you know, we have, we were limited in how much we could increase from last year to this year based on the form you'll see here in a moment. This is the amount, full amount that we could request. So thirteen million, five hundred and twenty-four thousand, three hundred and nineteen. This is the first page that goes to the auditor. Uh, was, then they asked a couple of questions. Was the subdivision involved in any interlocal agreements or joint public agencies for the reporting period? And yes, there is a list of them in this material. We, we have quite a few interlocal agreements. Our big one is the, um, comm center downstairs. Did the subsidis, subdivision operate under other separate trade name, corporate names or business names during the reporting period? And the answer was yes, we operate as a Tri-City Roadrunner, Scotts Wolf County Keno. That's the two I list every year. And they ask about the bond here on the first page, and how much is outstanding. That's page one.
Oh, just a minute, I got a question.
Mm-hmm.
You've got, uh,
On the certified.
Eleven million, two hundred and thirty thousand on principal bond interest.
Uh-huh.
You've got one million dollars interest. That's nine, that's nine percent interest. We're surely not paying nine percent interest on the bond, are we?
We aren't paying. We're as low as we can be. It's just.
They're usually two percent.
I mean, the full.
Yeah, we refinanced it at the bottom of the market.
Why are we doing a million dollars interest on it?
Because that's the documents they give me to complete the bond paperwork.
That, I can't be right. That's, that's a nine percent interest rate.
All right.
It should be one zero short of that.
One zero short of that?
Yeah, one two zero.
I have a page at the end of your first section. It's like the second page to the end. You have a point, Russ. That's.
It's not, that's not right. That number can't be right.
Well, I mean, that's total interest due for the projects. To the end of, I mean, that's not just this year.
Oh, you're, you're saying it's interest all the way out to the end.
That's cumulative, that's a cumulative interest.
So that's interest all the way out to the end.
It says bond interest.
Yeah, but, but.
And it's our total.
That's the total amount of interest.
That's interest totally out to the end, that one.
Right.
To the end of the bond.
It's not just one year.
Yeah.
If you're figuring to the end.
Right.
And like I said, if you go to the next, there's a block document next to the last page of the first section, that's my bond schedule. And it shows outstanding principal, eleven million, two hundred and thirty, and then I have principal with interest, twelve million, two hundred and eighty-one. Two forty-five.
Good.
Okay? Page number two, correspondence information. I'm to list the chairperson, county clerk, and the preparer. So that's pretty self-explanatory. Next page, this is what we, here. Published, put in the newspaper. The actual disbursements from each of the, there's the general fund and all of our special funds for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, and then our proposed budget, our cash reserve, and then total available. Just adding across. So this is, like I said, what went into the paper. And it talks about the levy there, too. And our unused budget authority of one million, two hundred and fifty-seven thousand. And anyway, like, then the, the hearing to date. Notice a special hearing to set final tax request. Next page, I'm asked to separate between operating expenses, capital expenses, debt service, transfers that we go from one fund to another, and my expenses need to equal my revenues. So we have actuals for the first year, actuals for the second year. Anyway, and then this balance, and I didn't say they don't have to equal. It just has to come up to the amount in our cash reserve percentage, they, according to the APA's calculation, seventeen percent. And then the next page, this is where sixty-two, I better agree, sixty-two million, four thirty. My expenses and transfers here have to equal expenses and transfers here. Where I go allocate all of our expenses between operating, capital, debt service, and others, all our transfers. And in the categories of our government, general government, law enforcement, public safety, other, highways and roads, public works, health and social services, culture and recreation, and other. We, we're uncollected taxes. Twenty twenty-two taxes will be collected in the ne, in the cur, now fiscal year. And you'll see what's still outstanding for the prior two years. This came from a report from the treasurer's office.
Is, would you say that's, that twenty-four million is pretty typical for this time of year? Okay, so even though the delinquent date has passed, this would be not unusual.
Well, it's not delinquent because we don't collect twenty twenty-two taxes.
In twenty-three. The first half in May and the last half in September.
And you, yeah, I'd say, so that would be the second half of it, wouldn't it?
Well.
And then, and this is as of June thirty.
Of June thirty, so the second half isn't in there. Okay, I understand that.
Yes. There you go, and that's for all entities, not just us.
As of June thirty.
Yeah.
Is there a chance that any of that twenty, twenty twenty money is still out there that can be collected or that, is that history?
No, I'm sure she's still trying to collect. That or else she, doesn't she have to come in front of you to say, to write it off if she, if it's deemed uncollected?
After several attempts and trying to get it, yes.
But that comes to us before it gets rolled off.
Before she's written off, yeah.
So where does that go into the budget if that does come in? Is that just a surplus? Or is that what, because we've already budgeted beyond that, right?
Oh, we've, well, it's kinda why we say we're estimating what our taxes are gonna be prior, um, we anticipate everybody, everything will come in, will be paid. Sometimes it doesn't. There you go. Yeah.
And of the, of that twelve thousand, only twenty-five percent of that is county revenue. Correct?
That's true.
Yeah, it's not all, it, it trickles down to all the funds, so, you know, it's levy to the different areas. We get some, we get, we give some to the airport, we give some to the city, some to the.
The schools.
Schools and, yeah. Yeah, that's not just our uncollected taxes. They're our burden. Okay, next page. This was the form I had to fill out to see if we were required to go to the pink postcard meeting. Allowable growth percentage computation form. So our total base property tax request authority is thirteen million, five hundred and twenty-four, three hundred and nineteen, forty-eight. I've requested thirteen million, five hundred and twenty-four, three hundred and nineteen dollars and thirty-five cents. All but thirteen cents of it.
So. So that's what, that's what, um, the last time we had any budget sessions, that's where we were at? Okay.
All right. The lid, we talked about this at length at the last meeting, was doing the calculation for the lid. How much you can increase your taxes from, we can, we are legally able to go two percent plus the growth percentage, right? Well, then we go and calculate that unused budget authority, and it's through this calculation on the lid that we take our total taxes and then that, and then motor vehicle information, all numbers that I plug in from current year. And then you take your bond indent, denseness, and interlocal agreements, two million dollars, that is removed from that. So twelve million, four ninety-five, oh, two-two. And then you can also do some stuff if you have capital projects of which we've not implemented this because, because we haven't. I think that would allow you to do, to use, tap into some of that unused authority. But we haven't gone down that path. Cause at one point, I'm told, we had, county was required to pay some back because we didn't use all that we had anticipated. Anyway, lid exemptions, this is where you would list the capital improvements, of which I don't have any. Uh, prior year funds, it comes from what I reported last year, thirteen million, four hundred and seventeen thousand plus a two and a half percent allowable increase. We are not doing the one percent as the, that was not approved at the last meeting. So we are allowed to increase by the three hundred and thirty-five thousand, four thirty-four. Take this number plus the number from the prior form. That's our unused restricted funds authority. And that'll move forward next year. All right. And levy limits. This is the county access, okay, this is where we have to stay underneath the point five. So we take our levy plus the ag society plus the airport authorities' request plus all the, all the fire districts, cemetery irrig, irrigation. We're at point four or five, two. So we are sitting well with under the point five we can request for levy. This is the list, next page is the list of joint, or interlocal agreements that I have in place. And by having at least two million reported, we get that extra five cents in levy. And our total is like a three million. I guess our big one is the central communications. We're part of NERMA, AG Office, emergency management. We can see all the different categories, and providing space for probation, for the state, State Department of Probation. Trade names, Scotts Wolf County Keno, of course, Contractors, Small Business Solutions, and Tri-City Roadrunner is our trade name for Scotts Wolf County Public Transit. And should be familiar with this form. This is what we got from the assessor to show our taxable value. And then I put in my document regarding the stats of our bonds. And the last page is a detail of budgeted and actual transfer between the funds. Where the Keno money went and where some of the general funds went. And how we're, because now all the taxes are going into the general fund. And how we're, because now all the taxes are going into the general fund, we move it down to detention center, so that's what the new line item. We have to move a certain portion that we budgeted to the roads department. Anyway, we use this for our audit too, because we have to track where, where the money goes from one fund to the other. Okay, that's what I have scanned, that's section one. Next section, I did not scan it yet, as, with some work papers, the property tax ask stuff that we've been working with in order to get our budget to the so- to the level where we're at. Today, I've been, that one I kept putting up on the screen, plus some detailed work papers. And along with a summary of the general expenses and a summary of the general revenue is in the next section. Then you have all the general budgets listed in your book, and then all the special fund budgets, so. What questions can I ask, answer, can I ask, until we settle, we do our resolutions?
I think, uh, the final number, um, is where we wanted to end up within fifteen cents anyway, the way it sounds. And, um, we avoided the pink postcard meeting, and that was one of the goals. And, um, so, obviously our mill levy went down, which obviously it should have, based upon valuation. And, um, so, I guess, uh, to the, to the extent that we're spending two point five-five percent or tax asking
Increase.
Increase. Um, that, I don't know what the, i- if we looked at the overall budget, how much extra it is with other sources of revenues, but um, I know our biggest concern is always tax asking portion of it.
That's.
Um, because that's what affects the taxpayer the most. Uh, or at least seen the most.
That went up three hundred thousand, didn't it?
Three hundred thirty-five.
How much?
Three hundred thirty-five?
Three thirty-five, yeah.
Well, and we still have to operate, we still have to operate, we
We do, right.
Unless you start looking at ways to creatively reduce something, we've got to operate and you cannot continue to cut, cut, cut. Or that's how our services will be. I mean, you can, gotta have the jail, gotta have certain staffing, we cannot reduce, we can't we can't put those people in, in harm because we understaff them.
And, you know, in my opinion, it's not that we're cut, cut, cutting, what we're cutting is the increase. Still have an increase, we're just cutting the portion of the increase. And so, um, I agree to that. Certainly, I'm gonna be interested in, when this is all said and done, going back and looking at the mill levy as it compares to the other counties in the state. I know we were second or third highest, maybe we can be a little lower than that now, based upon this, so. We'll see what happens.
I don't see how you will. I don't see how you will with our valuations, you get some big business in here, it might be a different picture. But we don't have the taxable valuations like a Buffalo County who operates the same kinda services we do.
Madison County is near our size and I think they might have four billion versus our three billion.
Yeah.
As far as valuation.
Same population, but that's, that's their, I think.
And they don't have, yeah, and they don't have a county detention center, they don't have a
Ten percent increases in valuation is gonna help take that down, and that's what we have. And, uh, but, I'm sure they're going up across the state as well.
Yeah.
Um, and whether it's that kinda percentage, I don't know. Um, but anyway, um, we ended up, our total tax asking ended up being to what I believe was a reasonable level, and of course, the pink postcard theory has caused that to happen a little bit, so.
I think one, you know, one of our jobs, as commissioners or any elected official, is to provide proof to the taxpayers, those that are paying the bill, that we're spending their money wisely. We have nine hundred miles of road that needs to be taken care of, we have a detention center, we have a, a state-of-the-art communication center that needs to operate. And, and, you know, I'm not one to apologize because we've, we're spending more money, I'm, I'm, I'm one to tout the fact that we're doing a good job with the money that we're getting, and sometimes it takes more money to do a better job. I challenge anybody to look at our budget, line-by-line budget, and say that, uh, we've overspent, or we have fluffy budgets, or we have people that are extravagant. I, I'm not speaking for the other, you know, the other agencies or the other, the other folks, whether it be the school districts or the cities. But I think we as a county are, are watching that closely. But I think, Lisa, you touched on it, that we, we do have to spend money, we do have to grow, we do have to do things differently. Uh, in, in order to, in order to operate. You know, I'm not one to, I'm not one to apologize, I'm one to tout the fact that I think we're doing a good job with the monies that we get. And that's, that's kinda where I'm at with all of that.
Yeah. And we're in a situation kinda like what our hospital's dealing with. You spread out and tried to be everything for everybody, now you can't afford that.
Yeah.
You're bringing it back.
You gotta pull it back.
And here we are. We're doing everything for everybody and western, we, we try to do, touch on so many things. And we're, are trying to help them as well.
And, and, and I think we're doing that, you know, we have, we have different operations that would work well to help other
And maybe these smaller interlocals.
Under locals and others that, that will bring more revenue in. Um, you know, the system is set up, whether it be the communication or the jail or whatever, uh, that will bring more revenue in, and will help some of these smaller counties. Uh, somebody had said, well, we were, we were told that the jail was gonna be self-sufficient, well, I don't know where that came from, I don't know if that jail's ever gonna be self-sufficient. Uh, as, as we keep filling up with
Our own.
With our own, uh.
There was a day it was on the radio, though.
What's that?
There was a day it was on the radio.
Yeah, you're probably, probably right.
Yeah.
Uh, but those are, those are things, those are some have-tos, those are some things that we, we don't have much of a choice. Uh, and, uh, you know, when you're told by, by higher authorities, how thick your mattresses have to be and how many calories you have to do, those are things that you have to abide by. You know, we can't build a fence and put them in tents, I mean, there's the thing, things that need to happen, whether it be equipment-wise out the roads department, or it's an upgrade down in the communication system, or an upgrade in our, in our, uh, uh, computer systems, you know, I, I'm not, not one to talk about that, but we're always the, the computers run the county, I'm sorry, but they do.
They do.
And we need to make sure that we're, we're state-of-the-art with all that sort of thing, so things cost money. And, and I'm not, I'm not afraid to tell anybody, we're using your money well, we're using your money well. And, uh, you can look at our budget, you can look at anybody, any department's line item, there's no fluff, there's no, nobody's spending anything extravagantly. Uh, and I think, I think we're doing well with what we're doing.
We're not spending anything in advance, we've stopped bonding a lot of the stuff, we're paying
Exactly.
Pay as we play, and it works a whole lot better, you're not looking down that, trying to figure out how to pay for that stuff.
And, and I'm not saying that the other agencies are doing that, I'm just saying, I'm speaking for what we have to do, so.
And I'd like to personally thank, uh, Lisa for her diligence, also the department heads and the staff for their willingness to, uh, present very workable budget requests. And the employees for working efficiently as they are, and professionally as they are. It takes a team, it takes commissioners, it takes department heads, it takes employees, it takes citizens to make it all work, and I think that's happening in Scottswood County.
Can I read the second resolution? And then can we get some signatures? And then I think that's all we need to do unless you have more questions.
We'll, we'll, we'll open it up for questions to close the public hearing. If you wanna read the resolution, then we'll close, yeah, read it, then we'll close the public hearing.
Setting the property tax request, whereas Nebraska statute seventy-seven one six-three-two and seventy-seven one six-three-three provided the governing body of Scottswood County passes by a majority vote a resolution or ordinance setting the tax request. And whereas a special public hearing was held as required by law, to hear and consider comments concerning the property tax request. Now therefore, the governing body of Scottswood County resolves at the twenty, twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. Property tax request be set at twelve million, five hundred fifty-three thousand, eight hundred fifteen dollars and seventy-seven cents in the fund. And nine hundred seventy thousand, five hundred three dollars and fifty-eight cents in the bond fund. The total assessed value of property differs from last year's total assessed values by ten point eight-five percent. The tax rate, which would levy the same amount of property taxes as last year, when multiplied by the new total assessed value of property would be point three six five oh nine eight per a hundred dollars of assessed value. Scottswood County proposes to adopt a property tax request that will cause its tax rate to be point three seven four four zero eight per one hundred dollars of assessed value. And based on the proposed property tax request and changes in other revenue, the total operating budget of Scottswood County will increase or dis- or decrease last year's budget by, now I did not plug that number, and I'll have to, I mean, this all comes from the APA. By fifteen point eight-eight percent, I'm not sure where that comes from. A copy of this resolution be certified and forwarded to the county clerk on or before October fifteenth. And that is it.
Okay, as I said, this is a public hearing, if there's anybody present that would like to speak for or against, or have a question on this, on the proposed budget, we'll open it up right now. Yes, ma'am, could you state your name and address, please?
I, I can't hear when they speak at the back.
If you come up here, please, it sure appreciate it. I'm sorry, we just, we just need to have a record of everything.
Thank you, Stoll, one three zero, six one zero, County Road D.
Okay, thank you.
And my question was, will the slides that are presented today, are they published or on the website at some point in the future?
They are, they will be on our website, and it's also on the auditor of public accounts probably later in the year. So, but yeah, we put it all on our website under, I think, fiscal, financial, and budget.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Okay, anybody else?
Well, I guess, and also, just to review, everything is available here at the desk too, if you wanted to see anything today.
Okay. Hearing done, I will close the public hearing, entertain a motion to either approve or disapprove the, uh, proposals, the resolution, adoption of other resolutions presented to us, both of them. Resolution of adoption of appropriations and the resolution for setting the property tax, uh, request.
Are we doing them separately or together?
We'll do, we'll do them separately, the first one is the approval of resolution of adoption and appropriations.
I would move approval of that resolution.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Is there any other discussion? Call roll, please.
Harris?
Yes.
Blue?
Yes.
Reisig?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Knapper?
Yes.
Thank you, the next one is, uh, discussion and approval, or disapproval, resolution for setting the property tax request as presented.
I make a motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion and a second, is there any other discussion?
I would like, I would be interested in, to, to learn more about that line five, Lisa. Cause that doesn't make, that doesn't quite make sense to me.
We'll just cross it out. I don't know what it proves like since part of the APA paperwork, and I might be able to see where it's at. Uh, okay, other operating budgets will increase or decrease last year's budget, probably all has to do with that levy authority stuff.
Is that a, is that something that's required on your form, Lisa?
Yeah, it's, it's all from the APA, I don't, they would have to explain where, how it's calculated, cause I can't view it. It's protected to prevent unintended errors, if you would like to go, like to unlock, go to review, and then print out a sheet. Which I did, but I can't see mine.
Can you view the formula bar?
That's what I can, I'll pull it down. Is that what I need? Okay, okay, anyways. Basic data thirteen. Round hearing fifty-eight. Hearing F fifty-eight.
Okay, so it's a negative, it is a negative percent.
Yeah, from, operating budget from last year. Basic inputs, B nineteen.
So is that because we spent most of our ARPA?
Probably a lot of it.
And so that ARPA money's not in the operating budget?
It still was there. The ARPA money, the bu- chunk of it was already spent.
Right, I think that's what that is.
Summary of funds page, don't, I mean, I'd have to go look at how the, everything flew, but this is stuff I had to input from last year's budget, summary of all funds.
So it ap- it appears that our operating budget is
Just up in the wrong way.
Over fifteen percent less than it was last year. But that is mostly due because we spent most of the ARPA last year rather than
In flux, in flux of work money.
Most of it was like this fiscal year, though. Yeah, I'd say that was.
The, yeah, the you mean in, in this, in this budget that were printed?
Like, like the last two months. Yeah, like the last two months. I can't, I can't, I just, I haven't seen that for ideas, I haven't seen that. Yeah, that might be. ARPA plan B one. Rather than we go to all the cases.
What was our total ARPA, was that six million or?
Yeah. Yes.
It's under seven million.
Budget expenditures, sixty. I'm looking at, there's a section, the next section after the APA work papers. That doesn't, we need to make sure my numbers are all right. Anyway. Or Kelly writes it out, it's right now, I'm sorry, my mind's not concentrating on why that would be there.
That's just a standard form, though, right, Lisa?
It's a standard form where they plugged in and I put in numbers from last year. Prior year, it was thirteen million, one ninety-eight, sixty, and I don't recall my data, so I'm ready to do this.
The, um, I'm looking at a page seven that
Mm-hmm.
talks about budgeted expenditures for twenty-two, twenty-three. Um, was sixty million, seven hundred and thirty-eight thousand. And then, the proposed budget amount for twenty-three, twenty-four, before we went through the budget hearings, was sixty-two million. And that got cut way back apparently to fifty-one million.
And maybe, there you go.
I'm assuming that.
Well, I'm looking at last year's form. Okay, so I have my numbers, proposed budget of dispersments, total available resources before property taxes, and I had more reserves out of there, but this minus this doesn't equal that. So, maybe I, and to go do some comparison, comparison? And it's not gonna be done right in front of you right now, so if you want to amend, or, we can turn our budget in late, and, and I can explain it later, if you're not sorry, I'm gonna, not be able to get a quick answer for you.
So what I would recommend is that maybe we pass this resolution. Give you an opportunity to review it. If there's a problem, you bring it back to us. Um, if there's not a problem, keep on going.
Like in an emergency meeting? Would we have to?
I mean, it's one statement, it's not gonna change anything, other than.
Right, and then if not, whatever the case is, you can explain it to us more the next meeting or something.
Give you time to do some research on it.
That way it at least lets us go ahead with getting it approved today.
Get approved today.
And only if you find something that's, that you're not comfortable with, would we have to do anything different. But you could give us a more, a bigger explanation, maybe at the next meeting, or.
We could do, we could do an amendment audit if necessary.
You make the decision.
I would, uh, I would continue with, with approving, approving this one, and then we can get an explanation on it, at a, at a future meeting. Alright, is there any other discussion? Or call or roll, please.
Reisig?
Yes.
Blue?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Knapper?
No.
Okay.
Was that a percentage vote that we, oh, wait.
I think it just had majority.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just checking.
Alright. Uh, so we have completed.
So we gotta go back to.
Oh, Kurt's here, I didn't see you come in.
Did you do both of them, you didn't do?
Yes.
Yes, we got them both.
Yeah, except for, I don't have a signa- do I need to attest anything? Are they supposed to sign this, or should I get a signature line?
There's what's assigned.
We assign them, and you attest them, Kelly.
There is no signature line.
For you?
Attestation.
Okay. If there's no line, then you.
I can print it, if you guys could hang around after this meeting, so we can gather signatures.
Okay. We'll listen to Kurt, and then get this done.
Okay.
How's that? Alright, Kurt, we'll go back to yours.
Well, because I was shuttling this for meetings, I was looking for a meeting. As I spoke with you last, um, on the last meeting, uh, just wanted to get a form of resolution from you, if you're all in agree- agreement, that, um, as part of the, um, Disability Mobility Initiative, and Walks America, or America Walks there, wanting to do a one week of fare-free rides on public transit. Um, and on our end, we had just decided to kinda limit it to our fixed route, stop to stop. Um, it just gets to be a little too cumbersome, we try and do it across the board. But if you're still, um, in agreement with that, um, I can read the resolution, Kelly forwarded it to you, but basically, it's just authorizing, uh, public transit to provide fare-free rides on our fixed route, um, from October second to October eighth. Uh, you will see some press releases, and partnership with Kimber County Transit Services, Open Plains Out of Alliance, uh, City of Sydney, their transit. We're all kinda partnering together to do something a little more, um, panhandle-wide for this, um, this initiative, and to, uh, promote, uh, public transit throughout the panhandle.
But this doesn't include door-to-door services?
No, we're, we're only gonna do it on the route, which, I said, that should equate to around five hundred dollars, possibly in lost fares, if, if that. Um, that's our, our averages, between about four eighty and five twenty a week.
Might be good in Sydney, first.
So, yeah, I'm trying to get, get a few people that might not, you'd normally use this to see what we're all about, and, and possibly drive those ridership numbers up. Uh, so, I can read it if you'd like, if not, I would just, uh, need signatures on this from you.
I think we had, uh, seen it and read it the last time you were here. How much did you say that you thought it would cost us, I think eight hundred dollars or so?
It's, that's what I heard, too.
Depending on the, uh, depending on how, this is the first part of the month.
Sure.
Cause we tend to be a little bit busier, um, right after first of the month. Um, but, um, if our, memory serves me, um, we average between four eighty and five twenty a week in fares on the fixed route. That doesn't include our deviations, and our, uh, any of the other, um, Medicaid trips, or other human service agency trips that are direct billed. This is just strictly cash-paying, uh, fares on the buses.
But it's certainly less than a thousand.
Oh, yeah, you know, it, it might be around five hundred, I would say.
Not gonna go broke for doing it.
I, I don't foresee it, and, again, we're coming up with some other ideas to offset that, so.
Okay.
Um, if, if you're all in agreement, I will give this to the chairman for signature.
Okay, do we have a motion for approval or disapproval?
I move that we approve the, uh, no fare, uh, resolution for our transit system.
I'll second it.
A motion and second, is there any discussion? Call or roll, please.
Blue?
Yes.
Knapper?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Reisig?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Okay, be in no other business? We're adjourned.